Welcome, everyone, to tonight's public hearing of the Public Service and Transportation Committee. I am Councilmember Eileen Paley, and I am the Chair of this committee. The topic of tonight's public hearing is a pilot project for Car2Go. We will review the proposed legislation that would suspend certain city codes to allow a pilot program for Car2Go, a car-sharing service to operate in Columbus. I am joined here tonight by Councilmember Michelle Mills. Thank you for attending, Councilmember. Joining me tonight in chambers is Randy Bowman, Administrator of Division of Mobility Options, Leslie Strater, Assistant Environmental Steward with Mayor Coleman's Office, and Josh Markowitz and IC Team with Cars2Go Business Development. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to discuss the proposed legislation to suspend application of the Columbus City Codes as it applies to Car2Go for residential permit and metered parking. In addition, the proposed legislation will authorize the Director of Public Service to create and implement the proposed 12-month car-sharing pilot program. The final purpose of the proposed legislation is to authorize the Director to promulgate rules and regulations pertaining to the 12-month car-sharing pilot program. Before I turn the presentation over to my guests, I would like to note that I have received letters of support from the Columbus Chamber of Commerce, the Italian Village Society, the Short North Alliance, as well as several other civic groups and individuals. I would like to thank and commend Cars2Go for their community outreach, and I trust that tonight's presentation is another important step in garnering public support for the car-sharing in our city. After the presentation by Mr. Moskowitz of Car2Go, as well as the presentation by Administrator Bowman, we will open the public comment portion of the meeting. Speaker slips are available in the back of the chambers, and I will be accepting them until 5:30. Speakers may bring their slips to my assistant, Rebecca Barnhart, sitting with her hand up in the back. Each speaker will state their name, address, and name of any organization they are representing, and speakers may then offer their comments for up to three minutes. I will now turn the presentation first over to Administrator Bowman, who will then turn it over to Mr. Moskowitz. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Mills, good evening. The ordinance that Councilmember Paley has described is, as proposed, would suspend the application of two city codes to allow what is proposed to be a 12-month pilot of the Car2Go car-sharing service. The two city codes that would need to be suspended for this pilot to proceed address two aspects of the service that is being sought by Car2Go. One is Car2Go, as a part of their service, is desiring to be able to park in certain residential permit parking districts within their home area, and I believe Josh will probably describe or display what is the proposed home area for Car2Go. Presently, city code does not contemplate, therefore does not allow, car-sharing vehicles to park in permit parking districts. So there would be a need to suspend the applicable section of code to allow the car-sharing vehicles to park in the permit areas. With the exception of Permit Area I, the other residential permit areas that are within the proposed home area would be allowed to have Car2Go vehicles parked in those locations. Also, another section of code requires that parking meters be paid at the time of parking by the person parking. The service aspects that Car2Go is proposing is, and it will be more described by Josh, is that when a customer of Car2Go parks at parking meters, that they would not have to pay the parking meter. Instead, Car2Go will reimburse the city on a regular basis. They are proposed to provide a deposit at the beginning of the 12-month pilot, and the city would bill against that deposit for lost meter revenue until such time as the deposit is depleted, after which Car2Go would be paying the city on a regular basis, probably quarterly, for lost meter revenue. The condition of the permit that would be issued to Car2Go for the 12-month pilot would require Car2Go to work with the city on GPS-based tracking mechanisms so that we can identify where and how long a Car2Go vehicle was parked at one of the city's parking meters. Not all the city's parking meters will be eligible for parking by a Car2Go vehicle. Those parking meters that would be ineligible would include handicap meters, would include 30-minute parking meters, and would also include parking meters that have peak-hour parking restrictions. Handicap meter, they are the blue meters that we have around town. There's about 80, 80 or so parking meters. Those are reserved specifically for people with handicap license plates. Our 30-minute meters, which we have approximately 100 of those around the city, those are placed to support the neighboring businesses of a certain type that require very short-term -- thank you -- that require very short-term parking, such as, say, a coffee shop or a dry cleaners, where it's kind of a run-in, run-out situation for their customers. And since the Car2Go service that Mr. Moskowitz will describe envisions that a vehicle, Car2Go vehicle, might be parked for up to 24 hours at a certain location, we don't think that that matches the intent of a 30-minute parking meter. I believe Car2Go is in agreement with restricting their uses not at -- to not at -- boy, that's bad grammar -- not at 30-minute parking meters. Lastly, parking meters that have peak-hour restrictions, are those meters that we have around, particularly the downtown, that are restricted for parking during either the morning rush hour or the afternoon rush hour? And as a Car2Go vehicle might be parked for several hours at any one location, the city does not want a Car2Go vehicle to be interfering with the flow of traffic during the morning or the PM rush hours. So the legislation, as the council member described, is proposed to suspend these two sections of city code, and as the council member said, would also authorize the Director of Public Service to promulgate rules and regulations which will spell out in more detailed fashion the operations that would be permitted by Car2Go and the expectations for Car2Go to operate in the city of Columbus. And since this is a 12-month pilot, this legislation would expire at the end of 12 months. Therefore, Car2Go would need to come back to city councils. So city council will have an opportunity to review the performance of the pilot and also the ability to contemplate renewing the -- or extending the pilot. I think that would conclude my comments. If the council members have any questions, we're here to answer your questions.
I think we'll move on to Cars2Go because if there are questions, they may answer them. So let's hear their presentation first.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley, Councilmember Mills, city staff, as well as Columbus residents who are here to testify in support of Car2Go coming to Columbus. We've been actively working with community and political stakeholders for the last 10 months in the hopes of opening service in Columbus. We're very, very excited to be here, to testify, and talk a little bit about how our service works, give a general overview, as well as what our expectations are for Columbus as a whole. I'm joined by Nicholas Hill, our Location Manager for Columbus, as well as Michael Mikos, who is the Head of Strategy for Car2Go North America. We've seen a lot of positive feedback from the Columbus community groups, as well as, you know, regular individuals, Facebook tweets. There have been several news articles that have already been written about our interest in Car2Go, and, you know, based on this feedback, we're very, very excited to be able to get up and running and start providing Columbus residents with the ability to use point-to-point car sharing. Just to talk a little bit about how Car2Go works, we are operational in 11 North American cities, eight in the United States, Washington, D.C., Miami, Austin, Texas, San Diego, Portland, Seattle, Denver, and Minneapolis, and we're also in three Canadian cities, Toronto, Calgary, and Vancouver. We've been able to expand quickly because of the ease and convenience of our service. You can make -- you can get into a car without having to make a reservation. They're usually five to 10 minutes away. It is point-to-point transportation, so you do not have to return the vehicle to a designated location, which is different than other traditional car-sharing companies where you have to make a reservation in advance. You also have to return the vehicle to a designated space. It's all accessible by a smartphone. You can see where the nearest Car2Go vehicle is by using our application, or if you do not have a smartphone, you can go on our website at cardigo.com, as well as call our call center, which is operational 24/7, 365 days a year. Car2Go is, at its base, at its foundation, a very affordable transportation option. If you look at AAA, they estimate that the cost of car ownership, a private vehicle, is about $10,000 a year. With Car2Go, you are not responsible to pay for gas, insurance, and, as Randy mentioned, parking. We take care of all of that. There's no monthly payment. There's no minimum. We usually charge a $35 one-time registration fee, but what we'll do is, when we launch in a city, in order to get people excited and comfortable using our service, we will offer a free membership for about 60 days, as well as free 30 minutes to every member that signs up. The way the pricing model works is it's 38 cents per minute, $13.99 per hour, and $72.99 per day. So it really is a very, very inexpensive means of being able to get from point A to point B. I wanted to show the audience, as well as the council members, what a day in the life of Car2Go looks like. This was in Washington, D.C. on August 3rd. We had about 2,800 trips taken on that particular day. And as you can see throughout the day, it's 6:00 AM right now, but as we start to progress into the morning, you can see all of the activity that takes place. These cars do not idle. We see in our, you know, major, significant, commercial, and residential density areas, these cars move between every 30 minutes and one hour. Just a flavor for what our expectations are for the cars in Columbus. We've talked with the city about a proposed home area to start. It's approximately 35 square miles. The northern border will be Morris Avenue. The western border will be 315 and 70. Cleveland Avenue will be the eastern border, and Morale Avenue and Prebus Avenue will be our southern border. So essentially Marion Village, the Short North, Italian Village, Franklinton, Clintonville. It's about approximately 171,000 Columbus residents reside in this home area. And we also have the ability to expand a home area based on member feedback, as well as the circulation of vehicles. It's literally just a flip of the switch in our back office. If we see vehicles compiling on a border, and members are telling us via, you know, Twitter, email, or Facebook that they'd like for us to expand the home area, that's something that we will definitely do. It's something that we've done in a place like Seattle, where we launched with about 35 square miles. We saw a lot of members living and driving to the western and southern portions of Seattle, and we're now at about 48 square miles. So we've increased it about 13 square miles. We've become part of the social fabric, the community fabric, of each community that we launch in. We're going to have a direct, immediate impact on economic development in the city. We'll hire between 30 and 40 full-time and part-time employees as part of our launch. Positions will include a location manager, marketing staff, fleet, and customer service. We'll also hire a contractor that will hire employees to service the vehicles, fuel them, and clean them. We're also going to lease office space as a home base for our employees, as well as members who have any questions that they can't answer via the phone or our call center or email. We do a lot of marketing when we start. One of the things that we really emphasize is educational marketing. We want to make sure that people are comfortable using Car2Go, that they know how Car2Go can benefit their lives, the convenience and the ease of point-to-point car sharing, the ability to pick up a car in Short North and drive it to Clintonville, and then if they'd like to, they can drive it back without having to return to an original location. We will have XM staff covering the entire home area at major commercial and residential corridors, as well as other neighborhoods where we do see a lot of member feedback based on where the cars are when we start. Again, the one-time membership fee will be waived for the first two months, and members will be given a free 30 minutes to get in the cars and drive. I should mention that all of the vehicles are smart vehicles, so it's perfect for urban living, because a Car2Go can park in a non-traditional space. It's about eight by six, so it's much smaller than the average-sized vehicle. It's also much safer. Even though it's a smaller car, we have a tritone cell, so it's almost like a cage, like NASCAR. I've seen instances where we've had F-150 pickup trucks involved in accidents with our smart car. The F-150 has to be towed away, and our smart car can actually be driven away. Once we launch, we'll actually do a restaurant takeover, where we will partner with a restaurant to offer free meals, to get people to come down, sign up for the service. They can also use our service. They can do test drives, and we also have a lot of games, so people can increase the amount of usage time beyond 30 minutes. One of the things that we've also really benefited from is partnering with existing transportation providers, as well as local businesses. In Washington, D.C., for instance, we launched Car2Go in March of 2012. There was a bike-sharing program, Capital Bike Share, which has been a tremendous success, and we knew that going in. It's a very similar point-to-point type of transportation. And if you're a Capital Bike Share member, we offer you a free membership, as well as a free 30 minutes. We'd love to be able to do something like that with COGO. I did speak with Heather Bowden, who is the Head of COGO, this afternoon, and we've already begun to brainstorm ideas about how we can partner. One of the other things that we do is we partner with local businesses, where we will offer discounts throughout the year at community events for our members. We really value, again, being part of the local community, being part of the fabric of each community that we launch in. As has been mentioned by Councilmember Paley, we have done some significant outreach over the last 10 months. We have met with 15 different community groups and have received 15 letters of support. Those range from the Create Columbus Commission, to the Italian Village Society, to Capital Crossroads, to Morpsey, to the University Area Commission. There is a real demand, based on what we've heard from Columbus residents and constituents, for this type of service, where if it's, you know, lousy weather and you can't bike, but you wanted to in the morning, you could take a Car2Go to work, be able to bike home. These are the types of scenarios that we've heard. I've heard from someone in Italian Village Society that the launch of Car2Go will allow him to get down to one vehicle in his household. That's something that we've seen in places like Washington, D.C. After about four or five months, people are selling their vehicle, or they're foregoing the purchase of an additional vehicle. In terms of next steps, Car2Go is prepared to launch service at the end of October of this year. We will have a staggered release, so we will not be releasing the entire fleet on the streets of Columbus overnight. We typically will add between 25 and 50 vehicles every few weeks, so that community residents, neighborhood groups are comfortable with the idea of Car2Go, that we're able to educate as many people as possible before unleashing the entire fleet. We do anticipate being able to get up to about 250 vehicles at the end of the year. And again, a lot of that will be contingent on what membership numbers look like and where people are going. We will continue to participate in major community events throughout the year. We pledge to continue to meet with community groups as quickly as they would like to answer any questions, as well as political stakeholders. We will continue to meet with the council, as well as the mayor, to make sure that they know that this service is something that is valuable to Columbus residents and is working for Columbus residents. Thank you very much for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I just wanted to announce that we are -- have been joined by Councilmember Tyson's staff, Azanna and Carl. At this time, I'm going to allow Councilmember Mills to ask any questions that she has, because I know she's on a tight schedule here, so I'm going to accommodate her.
Thank you, Chair Paley. I do have several questions that I have to ask to best understand the importance of this and the benefits to the city of Columbus and our citizens, some of which you may or may not be able to answer. I'll try to address them to either you, Josh, or to you, Randy. I think my first question to Randy would be in regards to parking. I know that you are aware, as I am, about some of the challenges and concerns we faced when it came to parking with food trucks and trying to accommodate that industry, this industry, and parking needs of our residents. And some of the communities that are in this home area, if that's the term to use, have been very vocal about the challenges of parking and when making changes or allowing parking of food trucks and to support the Car2Go, which would create, or you can address that it would not create, additional parking challenges. But as you know, that has been an ongoing discussion about parking in this particular home area for food trucks. How do we make all of this work in that area and space and not impact the residents as it relates to parking?
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. There is the pilot, the ongoing pilot for the food trucks, and I think that's got to be coordinated with Car2Go's pilot permit. I'm aware of several locations that have been identified for food truck parking, and we'll work with Car2Go on those locations to either restrict or otherwise not allow Car2Go to park there. But it certainly -- this is a pilot, and during a pilot, you have to measure, test, react. But I think, as Josh was indicating, there's a lot of coordination that's going to have to happen with the various users of the right-of-way and of the parking. So that is an important factor to consider, the impact of the Car2Go pilot on the food truck pilot. Good point.
Thank you. So as soon as there's additional information, because I, in my office, received several letters from residents in this particular home area in regards to food trucks and the parking, allow for the food trucks, but I do see that there is support for Car2Go in this area. And so just trying to make sure that I don't go away from their concerns that were originally raised with food trucks and not address them when it comes to Car2Go, because they were raised with me from folks in the home area. My next question would be, is there a fee breakdown in terms of the cars and how this all works for membership that we could take a look at? And I assume that's not something you can share today, but if you could, in terms from a member's perspective?
Sure.
Because one of the things I like to look at, as we allow for services, that there's accessibility for all of our residents, and from a price point, does that allow access for all of our citizens who may or may not have a certain level of income to participate? But it's a service that we support, so trying to make sure that we think about accessibility for all of our residents.
Definitely, and I think that's something that we pledge to work with you on. You know, if there are underserved communities, whether it be, you know, transportation voids throughout the city, where you think Car2Go can play a real role in getting people to and from work, people to and from home, that's something that we will certainly work with you on. Again, we can expand the home area. It's not a concern of ours, and we will work with the council, as well as the mayor's staff, on making sure that we can serve as many people as possible.
I think they did set the fees at 38 cents a minute, and that includes, I believe, that includes parking, insurance, and gas.
That's correct. And if you have some extra time, we actually have fuel cards in each vehicle, and if you fuel the vehicle, we actually give you free drive time, about 20 minutes of free drive time. So there is an incentive to actually fuel the car yourself. It's not a requirement, but it is certainly something that you can do.
In that same line of question, a fuel market question was, what type of fuel do the vehicles take?
They are combustion engine vehicles in Columbus, and they will take regular gasoline.
I think I'm leaning on the generosity of the chair a little bit this one. Thank you, Chair. I had another question about industry saturation. Over the last couple of years, we've went through a lot of overhaul changes in licensing and for vehicle-for-hire, our taxicabs and the others who are in what I would consider related industry. And so just trying to figure out, in other cities, have you partnered with the other modes of transportation successfully, particularly those who we consider in our vehicle-for-hire, and the impact on their industry? As we try to make sure everyone can thrive and get a piece of this, is there enough, can the market bear the changes and upgrades we're making with taxis, that investment and the Car2Go opportunity?
Definitely. We see ourselves as a complementary service to public transportation, to services like taxis, to services like bike sharing. One of the things that we feature in Washington, D.C. is an application called My Taxi, where if you're looking for a Car2Go vehicle, the nearest Car2Go vehicle, you can actually see where the nearest taxicab is. It's something that we would like to be able to expand to other locations. But again, we see ourselves as transportation partners. We don't see ourselves as a panacea or a monopoly in the transportation sphere.
Good. So I expect that you've reached out to those folks in the city related to that.
And we'll continue to do that throughout our time in Columbus.
My other question is, when you showed the activity, I believe you used D.C. as an example. I just want us to manage our expectations, given that this is a pilot, in terms of what activity we can see in usage, so that we manage and don't look up and say, oh, our picture doesn't look like that picture. It's just a matter of trying to make sure we manage expectations of usage and what we'll see from an energy standpoint, as you described in D.C. Can you share a little bit how we can manage, what you expect to see more realistically in the 12-month pilot?
Sure. I think it takes, you know, probably, I would say, 30 days after we launch in order for us to become really an established transportation option for a lot of residents. I wish our CMO, our Chief Marketing Officer, was here, Paul DeLong. He's an Ohio native, and Columbus is very near and dear to his heart, as a lot of folks in the audience already know. And we are going to do everything in our power to make sure that Columbus is a success for Car2Go. for Car to Go. I think that there are some folks out there who think about the Midwest and they think about car sharing, and they're like, where's the synergy between the two? But that's not our philosophy. That's not our mentality. We think it's going to work in Columbus. We just launched in Minneapolis over the weekend. We're fully invested in making sure that if there is a need for point-to-point car sharing, we're able to fill it.
Thank you. You did a perfect segue to my next question, which I think is one of the most important questions of the evening. And that is, if you could elaborate a little bit more on the safety of the vehicles, you talked about Minneapolis, the conditions, the weather and ability for the vehicles, just based on frame and all of that, to endure weather here in the Midwest, and certainly Minneapolis has a greater challenge in that than we do. But I wanted to hear more about the safety of the vehicle itself.
Sure. We operate in Calgary in Canada, which gets quite a bit of snow. And we've been there for more than a year now, have gone through a winter. It's become, you know, I wouldn't say formulaic in terms of how we deal with inclement weather, but we have a pretty good idea. And we've been able to use that foundational experience for our other locations. We will probably use a lot of the experiences that we've learned from in a place like Minneapolis, which does get quite a bit of snow, in a place like Columbus where there is inclement weather during the winter. To speak directly to your point about safety, if a member is involved in an accident, we actually have a SOS button in the vehicle where they can call our customer call center directly. And the call center will get directly involved. They will call a member of our fleet team. A member of the fleet team will actually come out to the incident, make sure that the member is okay. We will most likely call a taxi cab service for that member so that they can get home safely. But we take care of, of our members. And if there is an incident, we make sure that we respond as quickly as possible.
Do you have any safety stats that you would share with my office after today?
We can certainly do that.
Okay, I appreciate that. And my last question, I believe, is, in the presentation, you talked about several hundred in the first year. Is that what the anticipated number, based on what you've heard from stakeholders and their desire to have the Cartago program? Or is that hundreds just based on what a traditional launch year looks like for Cartago?
We've been forthcoming with all of the community groups about the number of vehicles that we would place into service in Columbus. We haven't received any negative feedback. Again, I think, you know, we stress the fact that this is going to be a staggered launch, so we won't have 250 vehicles on the Columbus streets overnight. We'll place between 25 and 50 every several weeks, place them in areas where we know members live, as well as we're seeing usage. And as I was discussing earlier with someone, in order for this really to work, you have to sort of go big. Because we want to ensure that, that people, you know, when they're within a 5, 10-block radius of a car, that they're able to use the vehicle. We wouldn't want instances where people have to walk, you know, 15, 20, 25 minutes in order to get to a car. So with a home area the size of Columbus, 35 square miles, we feel like we'll be able to meet the demand with about 250 cars when all is said and done.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to the additional information because those are points of concern for me, the safety, accessibility for all of our citizens in offering a service and supporting it from the city's perspective, to make sure that it's just not for a certain group, that there is some accessibility for all members of the community. I think Chair Paley, that concludes my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. And I don't think we had similar questions, believably, unbelievably. So I do have some additional questions before I will open it up for public comment. And the first one, it relates to your presentation. How are the excluded meters designated? How will people know that they're excluded meters? And I don't know if that's a Randy question, because if they're not designated somehow, like not for Car to Go, you're going to have some big confusion.
It'll be part of our educational outreach. We will stress the fact that you cannot park in an area where the restriction is 30 minutes or less. If a member does decide to do that, and the car is towed, for instance, we will reimburse the city for any, any tickets. And as a result, we will then charge the member. What we've seen in other cities is that after one or two tickets, people usually get the idea, because it's a financial disincentive for them to continue to exercise, you know, incaution. So we will work with the city in very, very close concert to ensure that what we've agreed to already is something that our members will understand. And, you know, again, it'll be a tremendous amount of emphasis on education to make sure that people realize where they can and cannot park.
I appreciate the fact, and especially that you've said it publicly, that you're going to pay the tickets and then go after the other people. That impresses me. However, Randy, we may want to consider in the pilot project, finding some way to designate the meters that they're not Car to Go, that you can't use them. That might be some kind of a collaboration that we could have together, mark them, you know, like, no Car to Go, so that we won't have people doing that. I am pleased that the legislation is written to suspend code for only a year, because that gives us plenty of time for community feedback and time to be responsive to any unintended consequences before we consider permanent legislation. I'm curious if there were any additional rationale for pursuing the only, the one-year pilot project at this time.
I think, I think 12 months will give the city to gain an understanding of the usage, the impact to communities, how Cartago has responded to constituent customer concerns, complaints, or needs that were not originally contemplated. I think too, you know, this, we have a big impact on parking congestion due to seasonality changes, whether it's Ohio State University students being in, with the university being in session, or special events, say, in the Short North. This will give us a chance to, to go through a festival season, to see the impacts of those types of parking needed activities on how Cartago operates and how Cartago reacts to those.
Thank you Randy. And I think you answered this, because you said that these cars would take gasoline, but we do have a couple charging stations for electric cars in Columbus. But I am concerned that if Cars to Go moves to electric cars, that we wouldn't have enough facilities to charge them. Could you address that?
Our plans for Columbus do not include electric vehicles. We have an electric vehicle fleet in San Diego, and some electric vehicles in Portland and in Austin. But because of what you've mentioned in terms of the existing infrastructure, we do not foresee having EVs in the Columbus fleet.
But obviously, we could expand if we did have access to more charging stations.
Certainly. It's something that we would certainly work with you on, as well as consider.
This is one of my issues, but since our city is pretty large and it's often difficult to know when you've left the city, when you're entering a township, or Hilliard, or Bexley, or Grandview, are there code changes necessary in other jurisdictions in order to deal with Cars to Go? And how do you know when you're out of the home area and how to get back?
Yeah. So when you actually leave the home area, we have telematics in the car that will tell you that you're actually leaving the home area, and that you can't end your trip beyond the home area border. So the car will actually talk to you and let you know that you won't be able to end your trip outside of those borders. Specifically, as it relates to Grandview and Bexley, I mean, those are definitely conversations that we can have, you know, throughout the course of the pilot and perhaps beyond. They're definitely destination centers. But we really wanted to focus on Columbus, the city as a core, to start. We really wanted you guys to be the anchor. And I think we'll certainly entertain subsequent conversations with those other jurisdictions. You can actually do what's called a stopover. So if you wanted to do some shopping in Bexley, you could park the car in Bexley. Let's say you parked at a meter. You'd have to feed the meter, but you could also do a stopover. So you take the key out of the ignition, and the car essentially is reserved for you. You'd still have to pay the per-minute price, but when you got back from shopping, the car would be there for you. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be like, you know, you'd have to call someone, you'd have to call, you know, a friend or a family member to come get you. So there is that opportunity. One of the things that we've also done is, we've partnered with grocery stores like Whole Foods that might be outside of the home area, where we see a lot of members petitioning us to go to. And we've created these private designated spaces where you can end your reservation. If you wanted to do a stopover, you go into the store, the car would be there for you in order for you to be able to drive back home.
So that brings up the other question that I guess I was kind of confused on. So when you, and for the viewing public to understand, when you leave the car, you stop paying as long as you're in the home area. But the car may not be there when you come back, because somebody may take it. However, if you're going outside the home area, like I could go to Polaris and go shopping, but because it's outside the home area, somebody won't take it away.
That's correct.
But I'm paying for it, for the entire period.
Right, right. In, in the first scenario that you described, because we have 250 vehicles in Columbus, the likelihood of you not being able to find a car within a five or 10-minute walking distance is very, very small. In each of the cities that we've operated in, we've, we've been able to almost expand in every one, based on member feedback and demand. We actually haven't had to contract any of the fleet size, because it's become such a part and parcel of people's transportation options. And so, the concern, the fear that you won't be able to find that specific vehicle, I think is alleviated by the fact that there are so, that there are, you know, 249 other vehicles within the home area.
Which leads to my next question, and I think I have more questions than you. Are there any locations that Cars to Go cannot go for, like, the airport or long-term parking?
So right now, we do not foresee allowing members to park at the airport, because it is outside of the home area. Again, we've talked to some residents, and there are areas outside of the proposed home area that people have talked to us about, including. And I think we would like to see what ridership looks like, what membership looks like after three or four months, and then have the ability to make that decision, rather than doing anything prematurely.
While the legislation will allow parking at meters to be paid for directly by Cars to Go, does the company have any arrangements or thought of having arrangements with parking garages or pay lots?
It's definitely something we will consider. If we see that there is a demand from our membership base that is being unmet in certain areas of the city where people can't park, one of the things that we've done in other cities is partner with private garage operators, private surface lot operators. And we have paid for private designated spaces. The member would not be responsible for paying for parking at a private garage or surface lot. Again, that would be part of the membership. We would pay for that.
Down the road, not right now, correct?
That's correct.
What about parking on private property, both at residence and in retail settings? How is this going to be handled to ensure, number one, that the car is available for somebody else or not? Because if you're, I mean, from what I'm seeing in my mind, if I'm going to German Village or, and which do have, does have driveways, and I'm parked in somebody's driveway, can somebody come and take that car and go somewhere else? Because then they're trespassing on my property.
Right. That is explicitly prohibited by the member terms and conditions. You cannot park a Car to Go in a private driveway. In the instances in which that does occur, the, most likely, the next member that, that will come up and pick up the car, or that homeowner, will tell us specifically that a car is parked in their driveway. And we will get in contact with that member and remind them of the terms and conditions and the fact that a private driveway is, is not part of the home area.
The legislation doesn't address many of the details of the agreement or the rules and scope of the service, which most likely will be developed in the rules and regulations. So the following questions are really about the rules and the regulations. And Randy, this may be directed to you, although you may know the answers also. While city code requires that a vehicle be moved every 72 hours, it is my understanding that Car to Go will be required to move their vehicles every 24 hours. Is that true and is that going to be in the regulations?
Yes. Yes, it is true.
So the answer is yes. How exactly will turnover of spots in residential neighborhoods be monitored?
Well, I think as, as Josh indicated, there is telematics, GPS in their vehicles. So we'll be able to see the usage, the duration of parking, look at trends. I think as Councilmember Mills acknowledged, that there are neighborhoods, sorry to call you out as you, that, that there are areas of higher parking congestion, and that we're going to pay particular attention to those areas, whether it's Italian Village, or German Village, or areas of the Short North.
I've got one more question for Councilmember Mills before she has to scoot. Has, has there been any feedback from Experienced Columbus about how they may boost their visitor or traffic issues?
Yes, we, we have met with Experienced Columbus with Executive Director Michael Brown, and they're very, very excited about Cartago coming to Columbus because of the interoperability of our service. If you are a Miami, Washington DC, Seattle, Portland member, and you travel to Columbus on business, you can actually use your Cartago membership here and vice versa. And so, for those business travelers that don't want to rent a car and just want to be able to get around for the day, you know, Cartago is a, is a perfect, is a perfect option for them.
Wonderful. That will segue probably into our public sector, public comment portion of this hearing. Our first speaker is Joshua Lapp. As Mr. Lapp approaches the podium, you will have three minutes to share your comments. And before you begin, if you could please state your name, address, and any organization who you may represent. Thank you, Mr. Lapp. The podium is yours.
Thank you. Joshua Lapp, 1092 Mount Pleasant Avenue, Columbus, Ohio 43201. I am here on behalf of Transit Columbus. And I would like to say that on behalf of the Board of Transit Columbus, I would like to express our support for the implementation of the Cartago program in Columbus. As an organization that champions the growth of public transit and a more multimodal approach to transportation in Columbus and central Ohio, we see car sharing as a critical component to improve local mobility and community vibrancy. Leaders from Transit Columbus have been involved in discussions with Cartago officials for some time. Car sharing would be beneficial in creating a more walkable and transit-oriented city. For those who prefer to abandon a personal vehicle in favor of walking, biking, and using public transit on a regular basis, a car sharing program provides the comfort that a car would be available when needed for trips that are not best served by one of those other modes. Cartago offers a unique model that we believe will work well in Columbus. Car sharing, improved public transit, and enhanced pedestrian and bicycling infrastructure will all proactively address the parking challenges faced in many of our core urban neighborhoods, especially in the neighborhoods like the Short North where I reside. By taking the initiative to improve the, each of these areas, it will increase the city's image as a vibrant and green city, could lead to an overall decrease in car ownership per household, particularly in areas of the urban core, which would mitigate some parking and congestion issues, and overall will enhance the attractiveness of Columbus to the millennial generation, a population which the city and the region wants to retain and attract. As a young professional myself and a member of a one-car household, Cartago will be uniquely suited to serve my household and others like me. In addition, nearly 10% of Franklin County's population does not own a personal automobile, a figure that's even higher in a number of city neighborhoods, and another segment of the population that would be well-served by an additional form of transportation. Car sharing, public transportation, bicycling, and even an enhancement of the city's taxi cab services could go a long way towards improving urban living for diverse populations of our city. It's time for Columbus to embrace these new approaches to mobility that coexist and interlink in cities such as Washington DC and Austin, Texas. Columbus has the chance to be Cartago's first in our state and second in our region, with such a system further cementing our place as an innovator in our region. Transit Columbus encourages the city to negotiate in good faith with Cartago and take actions that will support the implementation of this tested, improving car sharing model in Columbus. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lapp. I appreciate your comments. Our next- Our next speaker is Michael Hartley. Mr. Hartley, if you could please state your name and any organization you may be representing, and you have three minutes. The podium is yours.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Paley. My name is Michael Hartley, and I'm representing the Columbus Chamber. I serve as the Vice President of the Columbus Chamber, and obviously you know my colleague, Kristin Easterday, who serves as Director of Local Government Relations and new mother. As you know, she's been working very closely with the City of Columbus, the neighborhood associations in support of Car2Go and this pilot program. As the largest business organization in central Ohio, the Columbus Chamber sees a number of economic development, community and social advantages to having Car2Go and this program in Columbus. On the economic development advantages, Car2Go will bring jobs and revenue to Columbus. As Josh mentioned, Car2Go will bring between 30 and 40 full-time and part-time jobs to the City of Columbus immediately. They will hire Columbus residents to get their businesses up and running and to maintain excellent service levels. Car2Go will lease space in Columbus. Car2Go will compensate the city for parking when their vehicles are parked at meters during meter collection time. On the community advantages, Car2Go will work with neighborhood groups, businesses, and existing transportation providers to further strengthen our community ties. You know, as Josh mentioned, including the Columbus Chamber, Car2Go has met with 15 different community groups and gotten 15 letters of support, and they will continue to work with these groups and update them on the progress and success in the community. They'll work closely with the Columbus businesses in joint marketing efforts, providing members with benefits at local stores. The Chamber, obviously, we look forward to working with Car2Go and our members on this exciting opportunity. And the convenience and flexibility of Car2Go will allow Columbus residents to be able to patronize local businesses with greater ease and not be concerned with having to pay for parking. Car2Go will work with existing transportation providers, COGO, COTA, on joint campaigns to increase ridership and the attractiveness of existing transportation options. And on the societal advantages, Car2Go will help bring another option to how our citizens get from one place to another. Car2Go will bring an entirely new form of transportation to the City of Columbus without taking any public subsidy. Car2Go will enable Columbus residents to get to work more easily in public transportation voids without having to afford the cost of owning a vehicle, as you just heard. And Car2Go provides Columbus residents with the benefits of on-demand, point-to-point car sharing, allowing members to pick up a vehicle anywhere in the home area and drop it off anywhere in the home area. And finally, as we've met with, as Kristin's met with members of council and the mayor's office and had this larger discussion, you know, I'd like to add that this program will join other cities in Denver, in Miami, in Minneapolis, Portland, San Diego, Seattle, and Austin, who have Car2Go service. The fact that Car2Go came to Columbus and said, "We want to be in Columbus," further builds on what we already know, that Columbus is becoming and is now a destination city, and we have a tremendous cool factor going on, and it continues to grow. Columbus Chamber respectfully asks for your support of the pilot program with Car2Go. With this partnership, we can bring economic, community, and societal benefits to Columbus. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. You're winning me over with the cool factor. I like the cool factor.
All about the cool factor.
Kristin, congratulations on your new baby. This must be a really important issue for you, to leave your baby for the first time to come down in support of Car2Go. I think she deserves a few minutes on that, for that one, right? Thank you, Kristin, and thank you to the Chamber for everything that you do for us. And again, Kristin, congratulations.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Lawler. Mr. Lawler, as you, if you could please state your name and any organizations that you may represent, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. My name is Robert Lawler. I'm the Transportation Director for the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, 111 Liberty Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about the benefits of car sharing programs such as Car2Go. MORPC is Regional Planning Commission with an area of interest of 12 counties in central Ohio. The MORPC board is comprised of representatives from over 40 local communities, including the City of Columbus. We provide programs, planning, and services in transportation, land use, environment, housing, and economic development, and serve as the Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO, for Franklin County, Delaware County, and parts of Licking and Fairfield Counties. As the MPO, MORPC is responsible for cooperatively planning for the long-range transportation needs of this central Ohio area. MORPC has long been supportive of transportation options that allow travel by means other than driving alone. We believe that having more transportation options allows residents of central Ohio to have greater flexibility and choice in making decisions, how to best get around our region. We understand that people's personal budgets are tightening, and alternative modes such as transit, walking, biking, and car sharing offer more cost-effective ways of traveling. Many families, especially in denser urban areas, own more than one car just to make occasional trips. Cars are a significant capital expense for these families, and they also require a place to park that's either provided on the street, or by the public sector, or in a garage. In both cases, these automobiles, you know, take up valuable urban space. Car sharing offers an alternative model to this. Car sharing allows members to share the cost of ownership, making access to automobiles more affordable. A study of car sharing by Nelson Nygaard Consulting Associates shows that car sharing reduces car ownership, reduces vehicle miles traveled, and increases the use of walking, cycling, and transit. It concluded that each car-sharing vehicle on the road reduces five privately-owned vehicles. This has positive implications for parking, air quality, and wear and tear on our public roads. Car sharing has the potential to improve the situation in denser neighborhoods where parking is at a premium. Car2Go also complements MORPC's Ride Solutions Program, which promotes carpooling, vanpooling, riding transit, walking, and cycling to work. MORPC is interested in how it can leverage both Ride Solutions and Car2Go to provide more transportation options to Columbus travelers. In conclusion, we encourage Columbus City Council to allow for Car2Go to expand its car sharing service to Columbus through the proposed 12-month pilot. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nathaniel Vaughn.
Councilmember Paley, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today about the proposed car sharing pilot program. My name is Nathaniel Vaughn, and I live at 513 Elsmere Street in the Schumacher Place neighborhood. I'm a member of Mayor Coleman's Green Team, and I chair its Transportation Working Group. When the mayor's office was contacted by Car2Go, Ms. Strater in the Environmental Steward's Office asked my working group to review their proposal and recommend whether the city should continue to have a dialogue with the company. Car2Go, as you know, is offering to bring car sharing to the city's residents without asking the city for any money or to designate any spaces for their vehicles. We asked Car2Go for more information, including some specific, information that's specific to Columbus, and they provided us some basic data, but we still had some additional concerns. Then Car2Go's Marketing Director, Paul DeLong, offered to meet with us while visiting family in Ohio. He explained Car2Go's business model and the reason why they needed to have a partnership in the city, which is the subject of this pilot program. After hearing him out, we urged the city staff to continue the dialogue. Following that, I participated in some conference calls between Mr. Bowman and his counterparts who oversee parking in other cities where Car2Go operates. From those calls, it was evident to me that the company was flexible and very willing to work with city officials to meet the desires of each community. The Transportation Working Group of Mayor Coleman's Green Team supports the establishment of a car sharing pilot program in Columbus. It will provide residents with another transportation option that would nicely complement the use of COTA, COGO, bicycling, and walkling, all of which are greener and healthier options to driving alone. It would make it easier for some households to reduce the number of cars they own, and for households that can't afford to own a car, it could cover critical gaps in their transportation needs. Personally, as a city resident living near downtown, I would like the opportunity to be able to patronize Car2Go. I live about a mile away from work, childcare, and many other of my daily destinations. I make frequent use of bicycling, walking, and transit, but I feel that my household still needs to own two cars, even though I only drive a few thousand miles a year. Car2Go could save me money by making it possible to get rid of the second car. It would also encourage me to use alternatives to driving because I would have to pay for every minute that I chose to drive. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Our next speaker is Larry Totsky.
Councilmember Paley, thank you for the opportunity to address you this afternoon on behalf of Car2Go. My name is Larry Totsky. I live at 19 East Third Avenue in Italian Village, and I represent the Italian Village Society as its president. I'm here to heartily endorse Car2Go on behalf of the residents of Italian Village. When I first heard about Car2Go, I thought it was an exciting transportation option, and I thought of many ways that it could be used. And then I invited the Car2Go representatives to come to the Italian Village Society meeting and make a presentation. After they did so, many of our residents asked very good questions, much like you and Councilmember Mills did today, and Car2Go gave very good answers, direct answers and answers that made sense. And so at the end of that presentation, we took a vote of the members of the society, and they voted overwhelmingly to endorse Car2Go. We did, when we sent our letter into, to endorse the program, we did make one stipulation that Car2Go cars, vehicles not be permitted to park in the permit I zone in Italian Village, which, as many of you know, is a very congested area and an area where, right now, we're dealing with how to address too many cars in too few spaces. But that's the only permit area that we would suggest that Car2Go cars not park. If Italian Village or other parts of the Short North have additional permit zones granted after the moratorium is released, we would not see keeping Car2Go cars out of those permit zones. So it's simply the one zone of, that represents less than a fourth of Italian Village that we are asking that Car2Go cars not be parked. I also would like to suggest that Councilmember Mills' question about food trucks and Car2Go cars taking up extra spaces, I know that when the food truck permits were looked at, there's an area right across the street from my house where a food truck was to be parked, and I was not pleased with that because of the extra noise and garbage that could possibly be left from a food truck parking there. A food truck is probably three times as long as a Car2Go car. I would hardly welcome a Car2Go car be parked in that space because it would be convenient for me, it would be quiet, and it would be an easy way for people to get to and about from the city. Thank you very much.
Hold on, Mr. Totsky. I have some questions for you.
Okay.
I understand, and I visit Italian Village all of the time, the issues with permit I. However, if they can't park in permit I, as you well know and have stated in your statement, that that's only one-fourth of the area of Italian Village, you're okay and your members are okay with them parking on the outskirts of permit I and maybe making it more congested than it is now? Because if we, and I'm all, you know, if we do this Cars2Go, I want it on record that you're supporting this.
We are, definitely.
And that the whole neighborhood wants more cars in Italian Village.
We do not have nearly the congested parking in other parts of Italian Village as we do in permit I. It's a unique area with dead-end streets, narrow streets, numbers of houses that don't have off-street parking, and also because Short North business owners and employees have been granted permission to park there, that also adds additional cars parked in that very, very congested area. The remainder of Italian Village does not have that issue. And if we do grant new permit parking areas there, we've already talked about the fact that we can, we can fit in some Car2Go cars without any problem.
So what I'm hearing is that Italian Village would like to contribute to Columbus's cool factor. Is that correct, Mr. Totsky?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chet Ridenhour. Thank you, Chet, for coming down once again to testify in front of City Council.
You're welcome. I love talking to you, Councilmember Paley. Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Thank Councilmember Mills for being here earlier, and Councilmember Tyson's staff. My name is Chet Ridenhour. I'm the Administrator for the Short North Civic Association at 120 West Goodell Street, and I'm also a Short North resident. In May, our Short North Civic Board voted unanimously to support this pilot while specifically requesting to keep an open dialogue with the Car2Go team as the program would be rolled out. The Car2Go staff, including Josh, Paul, and recently Nick, have been very receptive and welcoming to our questions, to accepting our feedback and responding to our concerns. One of those concerns was how long a car might remain in the same place. They've assured us that they will have a rebalancing team that would relocate vehicles that have sat longer than 24 hours. This idea is exactly the type of smart and open service that other forward-thinking cities that our peers of ours have already implemented, cities like Denver, Portland, Seattle, Vancouver, and others. We've seen that bike sharing has just successfully launched. It's been a massive success. We see them all over the downtown, the Short North neighborhoods, as another alternate transportation and mobility option, and we see car sharing as the next logical step. I believe COTA has issued a letter of support as well. I was at a recent TNPC meeting when COTA's CEO, Curtis Stitt, kind of had his lightbulb go-off moment when he realized that this would help all alternate transportation services. As a regular attendee to Harrison West Society meetings, on behalf of their board, I'd like to share their unanimous support as another Short North neighborhood. They believe that this program fits within our community and would be very, very beneficial as an option to their residents and ours. We do understand that parking is at a premium in our Short North community in both residential and business areas, but we realize that giving residents a car sharing option along with COTA, COGO, and taxis will help us take more cars off of our streets in the long term, as one car can often serve the needs of five persons. We look forward to bringing this exciting new service to our city and residents, and would obviously give you, Councilmember Paley, credit as the coolest member of council in chambers today. So, thank you for your support. I'm open to any questions.
Good save. And I have to say, Chet, I was so surprised. My biggest concern about Car2Go was the Short North and Short North parking. And I personally called you last week to make sure that the Short North was on board, and I appreciate that you went around to the other neighbors and checked with them. And that's one of the reasons why it's a 12-month program, pilot program. I'm hoping that it's successful, but we have some time to tweak it if we need. But thank you for coming down.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Trevor Major.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. My name is Trevor Major. I'm here representing the German Village Society. I would like to say that we're excited about the possibility of this new, additional, alternative form of transportation. Also very happy to see that the city is focusing a lot on the parking of the vehicles. As you know, I'm sure parking is a big area, an issue in the village, and particularly permit parking. I can't give you a position right now from us because I'm not in a position to do that regarding whether we would be okay with these cars parking in permit parking or not, but we can certainly get back to you on that. And obviously, our hope is that ultimately this would reduce the number of cars in German Village somewhat by eliminating the need for people to have an extra car and whatnot, and probably some people to even have a car at all. Some of the things that I would encourage Cars2Go to consider would be, for one thing, task rabbiting the vehicle redistributing. task rabbiting, the vehicle redistribution. In other words, instead of paying people to run around and drive these cars around to redistribute them, incent your customers to do that. If there's an area that has a lot of cars and they need to move to other areas, offer a reduced price to drive from one area to the other. That's a much greener solution and could probably be implemented at least partially. Also, I did notice when looking at the home area that there's a few very desirable areas that aren't in the home area that I'm sure a lot of people would want to drive to, such as Easton, such as Polaris. I don't know that the home area needs to be contiguous, but that's another thought. The city has done a great job of using its growth corridors to, shall we say, you know, some of those areas are part of the City of Columbus even though areas around them aren't. So if the home area doesn't need to be contiguous, perhaps those areas could be included. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
This question is for Mr. Moskovich. I thought that we had talked to German Village. Did we and who did we speak to?
We spoke with Shilo Todorov, who is the Executive Director with German Village. We gave a presentation several months ago, and German Village actually wrote a letter of support, supporting Car2Go's introduction to Columbus.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because that was one of the things that I had asked for was that we got feedback from all the neighborhoods. So we did get feedback from German Village, however. I am open for comments after this meeting. You can call my office if you have additional comments. Mr. Major, this is a pilot program, and I think that Cars2Go, Car2Go, singular, wants to try to keep it simple at first and then will expand as needed. So when you do a pilot project, you try not to complicate the world while you're doing it. So we will let them do their home area first and then they'll expand it where people want to go. I think they're going to keep pretty good data on requests from the community. Is that correct?
That's right. And just to elaborate on the German Village letter, we have a copy right here, was signed by Matt Essenbrenner, who's the Chair of the Long Range Planning Committee, and we're happy to provide that to you after this hearing.
I actually think I have it. I just don't have it with me. I remembered seeing it, and that's why I wanted to make sure that we pointed that out. Our next speaker is Robert Bickus. If you could please state your name and any organizations that you may represent. And, Mr. Bickus, you have three minutes.
Certainly. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Robert Bickus, Jr. I'm with the Create Columbus Commission. We did write a letter of recommendation, a letter of endorsement for Car2Go. I'm also here, I'm the broker for movedowntowncolumbus.com, which is a real estate company, and we deal mostly in the downtown area. So I have a bit of a unique perspective as far as about, probably over half of the folks we work with are transfers in from other cities to Columbus. So I see this all the time. Public transit is a big question they have for me, and I don't always have a great answer for them. And I think this would be a great answer. I've brought this up to folks in the last couple of months that have been entertaining moving to Columbus, to the downtown area, and it's, I get an overwhelming response. Folks either have heard of it, have it in the city they're from and are very excited, or haven't heard of it and are very excited for this to be an alternative option for them. I have, and folks that I know that already live downtown here or in the neighborhoods, I live in the Short North myself, I hear constantly that I can get rid of my second car, I can get rid of my only car, which I think, again, would help alleviate the parking, current parking problems that we have, especially in the Short North. And I think the statistics someone said earlier was that every one car to go takes five regular cars off the street. So that's something, just again, in speaking with folks, entertaining moving to Columbus or that already move here, that it's something that seems to make sense for all of them and it seems exciting. And I think it's important to say, both from the YP Commission, the Create Columbus Commission, and folks, you know, empty nesters, middle-aged professionals, even retirees that are looking at moving downtown, embrace this idea and really love it. And it weighs heavily into their decision as to whether or not they're going to take a job in Columbus. If they can sell their car and have reasonable public transportation like this, affordable, reasonable public transportation, that's a plus for them to move to our city and take a job in our city. I think that's really all I wanted to say. I've lived, worked, and played in the downtown neighborhoods for 20 years as a full-time Realtor myself, so again, I think I've got a unique perspective to be able to lend as far as how this would bring value to Columbus in attracting and retaining our young professionals, much less professionals of all ages and even retirees. And I think it also helps our cool factor. I mean, it shows that we have an open and innovative approach to things like public transportation and some of the issues that we have that are competing cities have shown that are working really well. So that's it. Thank you again for your time.
We appreciate your perspective, Mr. Bickus, and thank you for coming down tonight. Our last, I believe, maybe last person is Andy Hutter.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. I'm going to keep my comments brief. First, my name is Andy Hutter. I live at 145 East Como Avenue in Clintonville. Prior to that, I lived and owned in the Short North for four and a half years. Columbus native. I'm also here representing the Create Columbus Commission, a little more formally than Robert. We got here together and we realized somebody should represent a couple of different groups. I'm also representing myself. As a property owner in the Short North for those four-plus years, I understand the parking challenges, and now as a property owner in Clintonville, I also understand some of the transportation challenges. And rather than recite and repeat some of the factoids and messages that you've heard in support of Car2Go the entire evening, two quick stories. The first is, when my fiancee and I were living in the Short North, we were both also working in the Arena District. We both had a car, so we had two cars between the two of us, and my lease ran out on my car, and we made one car work for eight or nine months until her office actually picked up and moved out to Easton. And all of a sudden, her car was out in Easton 60 hours a week, and I was truly without a car. So I needed to pick up a second car, get a second car again. Had Car2Go been in the city, I could have used that to go out to client meetings and offset that need for a second full-time vehicle whenever I needed to run to the grocery store or go out to Dublin to meet a client or whatever it might be. It's not so much owning the vehicle itself, it's the, you know, $2,200 a year in insurance or whatever it is that you have to pay on top of it. It would be very nice to not have to worry about that, as one example. I think that as a city, we are very well poised to embrace these new multi-modes of transportation. So I will keep it short. Like I said, basically just here in support of the initiative and on behalf of the Create Columbus Commission, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I normally don't do this at hearings, but I know there was a question about COTA, and I could have sworn I just saw a COTA representative in the back of the room. Are they still here? Oh, she left? Okay. I believe that we have COTA's support. Is that correct? I'd like to thank everyone who joined us tonight. I don't normally have overwhelming support for something. Obviously, somebody's worked hard on this effort. I am excited also about Car2Go coming to the City of Columbus and its cool factor. I would like to thank Councilmember Michelle Mills for being here tonight and Councilmember Tyson's staff, Randy Bowman coming down here when he's sick. I hope you did not infect us, Randy, but thank you for coming down for this. Leslie Strater and Josh Moskowitz, thank you very much. I couldn't do it all without Kelly Arthur Hykes from our Legislative Research Office and my staff, Rebecca Barnhart and Nancy Piersoli, as well as all of our community members, both here tonight and in the listening and viewing audience that care about this city as much as I do. Thank you, and this meeting is now adjourned.